Good morning. We would like to welcome you out to this study session of the Mesa City Council. We'd like to excuse Mayor Smith, who is out of town, and Councilmember Richens will be joining us shortly. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda for the regular council meeting on April 1st. And as soon as the council members have their computers up and running. First page would be items 2 through 4A. Items 4B through 4D. Sorry. Oh, yes. Questions? Maybe we'll have a little presentation here on this?
I think they're ready.
Yeah.
I think they're, because of the significant activity as far as vehicle purchases, I think they would like to make a brief of the council of that way.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You know it's up in the center.
Keep it that way.
Good morning. Thank you. Maybe that's what we should say, Vice Mayor and Council. Fleet and Purchasing have done a tremendous amount of work over the last few months in bidding out all the vehicle purchases that are on this agenda. And if you remember your last agenda, there was a few vehicle purchases also. Those were also bid out. And there'll be a few more on your April 15th agenda. And all these vehicles and purchases have been bid out. In the past, these vehicle purchases may have been purchased off a cooperative contract, but Fleet and Purchasing worked together to create this opportunity for local vendors. And as you can see on the agenda, some of the purchases are being made by the local vendors. If you remember last week, the awards went to local vendors. I just want to thank Pete and Fleet for all the work that they've done, and Alice for all the work in bidding all this out. And as you can see from the agenda, the number of items that are also on the agenda today, they did this while they were maintaining a tremendous workload other than vehicle purchases. And with that, we're ready to answer any questions that you have on the first nine items, which are the vehicle purchases.
Jim, can you give us a quick summary of how many units that is, vehicles? And do you have that available in front of you?
I don't have. I have 115. And that's from last week, this week, and other vehicles that may be coming to you on the 15th.
Right. That's for the viewing public's benefit to understand the scope and the magnitude of this tremendous amount of work, as you say.
Yeah, it was 17 separate bid packages that went out.
Vice Mayor, Council, I think it's important to note, I think, to know that the staff, I think some of the council has received this briefing, that the staff went out and met with all of the local vendors in Mesa to make them aware of this bid before it went out. We also made them aware of what the state contract, I'm losing the word, that was out there already, so that they would know kind of where the pricing was. We also reminded them that the council has also approved the ability for us to discount or give them credit, I guess is the right word, for the sales tax, the local sales tax portion of the bid. So all those were discussed and presented to each of the Mesa dealerships before the bids went out, and then they were able to bid on the projects. And then you can see that did result in some local vendors being successful. Well, we wish there were more, but others, you know, the large ones, the biggest numbers are still the Tahos that are going out for the police department. So we're still working very hard with our local dealerships, making them aware when we're going out for these purchases, so they can have the opportunity, have all the information for them, so they can compete aggressively.
Mr. Richens.
I am very pleased with the efforts that have been made. I mean, we really just have to give people an opportunity. And I think we've done that. We've reached out, we've told people what's coming up, and it's up to our local vendors to then win bids. And it's still a competitive marketplace. It's still important for us to take the lowest bidder and save our taxpayers as much money on these purchases as we can. It's great. I'm thrilled when we have local participation. So thank you for the efforts that you guys have made in reaching out to local vendors. And we need to continue that. But I think we've done a great job in involving them in that process, so thank you.
Councilmember Summers.
I have curiosity. I agree with what Dave Richen said. I think it's about opportunity, giving your local business that opportunity, but I'll bounce that to, do we know that the amount of money we're spending on these vehicles is about what we would have spent if we had gone with a state contract, as we have done in the past? Or how much above or below?
Matter of fact, all of these prices were compared against.
Against that?
So there are some that are still coming from a state contract, because the state contract was still the lowest. Is that right?
That's correct. What took place was that the folks that do have the state contracts have actually bid these bids also. So I think your question is, is the delta between the state contract and the actual winning bid number? In the case where our local folks, it's about $1,000 difference is what we're seeing.
Per vehicle?
Per vehicle. Yeah, it depends upon the type of vehicle that it is. The state contract pricing is very, very low, and our folks are getting in the range of about $1,000 difference. In the case of, we've got a bid that's coming up to you next, I guess it's the 16th. And in that particular case, Brown and Brown actually did beat the state contract bid by using the 1.75 preference.
Okay. Which is our?
They were.
Our sales tax. So we're eschewing the local sales tax to encourage the local business. Do we have for these, however, I forgot how many there were purchases, do we know how much the difference is between the two total?
In the case that, in the case with Burge Ford getting two different contracts here, one for 12 vehicles, one for one, in those two cases, they were made the award based upon technical difficulties with the lowest competitor. So they were lower than Burge Ford. The delta there was about $700 per vehicle.
Pete, on the Tahos, though, where it's just the opposite, the local bidders, even with the discount, were still about $1,300?
Yeah.
$1,300 difference between what the best we could get from a local contractor and what the state contract was. So it's kind of gone, it goes back and forth on, sometimes the local guys are able to beat the state contract, and sometimes, but it's, the margin's getting much more narrow than it's been in the past.
There are some things that we're seeing. When we first started this process, and you know, as Jim said, you know, there were 17 total contracts that went through, and that took some time to get those through. But there are some things that we did see. With the local bidders at the beginning, in the early contracts, results that we were getting back, bid results, a lot of those were not filled out very well. There were mistakes, there were some errors, there were corrections that needed to be made. And as this has gone on, several different iterations, they are better and better at doing this. And actually, the contracts that ended up going to Burge actually were in the later group. So they're getting more astute, and they seem to be spending some more time on it also. To give you a little bit of background on the state contract, you know, the obvious question is, how come these, our local bidders can't hit the state contract price? The state contract price itself, they're really not making any money on the state contract price. What they're doing is that it's volume through the dealership. So for instance, if you're going to sell 600 vehicles through the state contract, the dealership is going to get that discounting from General Motors for that additional throughput. And you're making your profit then, based upon the delta that you have in your retail side. There's where you're actually making profits. So you're making more profit on the retail side, you're not really making any profit at all on the sales to governmental agencies. So some of these businesses are set up to do that, and some don't have a lot of experience doing that. Here in Mesa, we only have two vendors that have Fleet departments. The balance of the dealerships do not. And when we found that out, when we went out and did the outreach and started talking to the local dealerships, some of them said, you know, that this is really not what we do. And it just really boiled down to where we had two dealers who were, you know, aggressive enough and wanted to be in the Fleet business, that you're seeing the results here.
And for, just as a simple number, for all the vehicles we're purchasing, how much above the state contract do we expect that we're paying for these, total? All vehicles, or is it even?
No, there's not any vehicle we're paying above the state contract.
So we're all?
They're either at or below. Is that?
At or below, and going out. That's incredible.
No, that's not necessarily correct. There are some. In the case of Burge, you do have, those vehicles are higher than the state contract price.
But what was, there was a difference in the life cycle part of that, or what was the reason?
No, it's just simply that's their declared profit margin. Once again, remember, there is no profit margin for these dealers at the state contract price.
Okay.
Now, and to kind of take that a little further, if you do not have the state contract and you're pushing these vehicles through, well, you're not going to be selling enough vehicles to get that discounting from General Motors or Ford to make it worth your while.
Any other questions?
My takeaway was fair and open process, great outreach by staff to educate, help people, you know, look at the process. So I think the citizens won in the end, and I appreciate all the efforts that you do.
One thing I would like to leave the council with is something that is, I think, is important. We're talking about capital purchases, but I'd ask you to remember this, too. Annually, Fleet spends a tremendous amount of money with these dealerships locally. We do that in parts and service. If you look at Burge Ford, last year we spent $97,000 with Burge and parts and service, and with Brown and Brown, about $64,000. So that's a reoccurring profit for them every year, where this is one sale only, they may or may not get it. So they're making money now on both sides of the house, which is really great.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate the time and welcome. I believe that takes us up through 4I, unless I've missed something. So the next item would be 4J.
Hold on my computer, folks, please.
Sorry.
Does your computer?
Everybody's caught up there? And then, so going to the next page on the hard copy, looking at items 4K through 4M. Yes, Mr. Summers.
4M looks like an important program, but we have like a two-minute briefing on that?
Please. Looks like through the fire department, fire and medical services group. Is there anybody here that could speak to that? Great.
Or even 60 seconds?
A minute or six?
Two minutes.
I think that's what I said, I hope, the first time.
Please feel free to introduce yourselves.
Less than 60 seconds, it's a good program. I thought we'd get it on tape for people who might be watching, because they may have a need for this program.
Councilmember Summers, Vice Mayor, Fenter, we've got Warren here from our Fire and Life Safety Education Division. He's in charge of this program, has been working through purchasing to get those. But I think Councilmember Summers would just like an overview of what this program does and how we're interacting with the community. So I'll turn it over to Warren to answer that.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. The home safety inspection program actually provides a service to members of our community where we have volunteers that go in. Basically, they do an analysis of a customer's home. We'll look at their existing smoke alarms, see whether or not they're outdated, whether or not they're functioning. If they're outdated, we will replace up to two of them. We will replace the batteries. We actually go through the home, look through any potential hazards, trip hazards, any overloaded electrical outlets. Again, we're trying to make the environment that they live in safe, not only for the occupant, but if fire and medical needs to go in and either do a rescue or provide medical services, it's safe for all involved. This particular item that we're talking about here is hearing impaired smoke alarms. And we're working with the Sequoia School, which is a charter school, as well as partnering with Mesa Public Schools, as well as looking for opportunities in the community to provide this to seniors that might also be hearing impaired.
Yes. Councilwoman Higgins.
Thank you. I just have a basic smoke alarm question since you're here, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. But you said check to see if it needs to be replaced. Even though you test your alarm and it's working, is there like a life cycle of a smoke?
Yes, there is. Smoke alarms actually do have a 10-year life cycle because of, there is a radioactive isotope that's in them.
Really? So even though you test them and they all turn on, you should still replace them?
That's correct.
So that's not just manufacturing, let's make some money. You really need to replace them?
No, there's an efficiency that drops off after 10 years. So it will still function, but not as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? It looks like this is a FEMA grant with a 20% match from the city of Mesa. So we appreciate all those grants and getting those federal dollars back here and helping. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was 4M. Moving on to 4N through 4P. And nothing there. 4Q through 4S. Yes, Councilmember Richens.
On 4S, it's quite an increase in the contract amount, so maybe let us know what's going on. Got some emergencies, well repairs, if you can talk a little bit about that.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. Councilmember Richens, yeah, unfortunately, it's been a bit of a tough year for us, for our wells. As you know, we do try to keep our wells up so that we have redundancy during drought and during canal outages. So well maintenance and repair and rehabilitation is pretty much always ongoing. Unfortunately, we just hit some snags this year. We did have a problem in, let's see, the Desert Sage Zone's well number nine, we had some problems with arsenic. So we tested that, we pulled the casing to see if we could seal part of the well and remediate for arsenic in that way, and that was pretty expensive. Unfortunately, it turned out that that was not successful, and we'll probably have to abandon that well, or do arsenic treatment. Let's see.
And on that arsenic, just a little, that's a naturally occurring process?
Yeah, let me elaborate on that. Arsenic is naturally occurring, unfortunately, in the aquifer throughout the Valley of the Sun. There are a couple of different ways that we can kind of treat for it. The way that the aquifer is layered, the arsenic tends to occur in certain areas and not in others. So if you're lucky, you can go in and kind of cement certain areas of the well, so that the well is no longer pulling from those portions of the aquifer. And oftentimes, that will actually work, and then the water that you're pulling is out of the aquifer that doesn't have arsenic. Sometimes that doesn't work, and unfortunately, in this case, it did not work. So we're not, for now, we're just not going to use the well. If we decide that we need to use the well in the future, we'll actually have to bring in some media and treat for it at the well site. But that was a pretty major expense. I think that was about $70,000. And then, but we also, on arsenic, found arsenic in City Well 26. And so, and we were not able to case, you know, put cement in the well and case it so that we could pull cleaner water from other parts of the aquifer. And City Well 26 is a really important well for us. It's one of our highest producing wells. So we're actually going to move equipment, move arsenic remediation equipment from one of our wells that had the equipment and is no longer being used. And we're going to take, kind of load it on a truck, the whole device, we're going to load it on a truck and move it over to City Well 26, and use the media to remediate for arsenic there before it goes into our system. And that was, gosh, that's like, that's going to cost us, I think, another close to $100,000 to move all of that equipment.
Is that part of this?
Actually, that, you'll be seeing, we had to, you'll be seeing that one later, that we're going to have to increase the well maintenance contract to do that. And then, let me see what else we have on here.
Sure. Quick question on that. And those wells are just used for your backup, right? 80% or 90%?
Well, a little of both. I would say that's true, mainly backup, Councilwoman Higgins. We use them mainly as backup in the western zone, which is West Mesa, when the SRP canal outage occurs every year. But in East Mesa in particular, there is a fair amount of constant groundwater pumping. Not that much, I would say, maybe 10% of the demands in East Mesa, because we don't quite have the capacity available in southeast Mesa in particular. That's why we've come to you repeatedly and talked about building the third surface water treatment plant in southeast Mesa. So, but yeah, mainly, in West Mesa, it's mainly drought and backup pumping, so. Let me look at my list and see if, oh, yeah, City Well 8, the screens in the well were really clogged, and so we had to pull the casing and scrub it and see if we could clean that off, and that's been successful, so that's good. But that was another $45,000. Let me see. Oh, yeah, and then in Desert, New Well, Desert Well 18, down in southeast Mesa, that one, we were doing the testing for, the water quality testing for it, and unfortunately, we couldn't discharge in the area where that was, we couldn't discharge the waste from the well nearby. We had, there was some construction in the storm drains going on, so we had to install some additional piping, like three quarters of a mile, to be able to test the well, and that turned out to be very expensive as well. So unfortunately, it's been a rough year for our wells. I'm hoping next year will be better for us.
Do we, like, I know that arsenic treatment stuff was at the well at Greenfield and Main Street? The one you were using and hadn't used for years?
Right. It was Falcon Well 4.
So how many wells do we have in the city that we need to have that arsenic? Because I know you explained how that whole system works and how expensive it is, just for me.
Right. You know, I would have to go back and double-ish. Not that many. I mean, Mesa's been relatively fortunate compared to some of the other cities. I, offhand, I know four, I think it was Desert Well 10. Offhand, I want to say we are no longer using about three or four wells because of arsenic. But compared to some of the other cities in the valley, that's actually not that bad.
So then, we only have that treatment on that one well that you're moving it to?
Correct. The others, for now, we've just decided we'll no longer use, and then if we need them in the future, we'll go ahead and invest in the remediation. It's relatively expensive, so we don't want to do it unless we really have to.
Thank you.
Any follow-ups, sir?
Yeah, it's important for the public to realize that sometimes we take for granted, we turn on the tap, water comes out, and there's a lot that goes into the providing safe, clean drinking water to our public. And so I just thank you for the explanation to help us understand what's going on in our system.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councilmember Richens. That is true. But your original suspicion was correct. It's just, it's been a bad year. So hopefully next year will be, we'll get lucky.
And Councilmember Richen serves on AMO, or what's that acronym?
Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. So it's all the SRP cities get together and share ideas and best practices and keep an eye on what each other are doing.
Excellent. I appreciate you doing that. That's wonderful. Well, thank you, Ms. Hortson. Appreciate that. Okay, so that was 4S. We are now at 4T through, looks like 5B. And if there's nothing there, item 6 is take action on the following MOU. And I believe we're going to have a presentation just following this, so if the council's okay with that, we'll, it should be pretty good. Exciting stuff. And then, item 7A would be introduction of the following ordinance with regard to health sanitation and environment stormwater. So if there's no information there, oh, excuse me, let me go on. Item, looks like 8A, and then we have items 9A and 9B.
I just want to comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to comment on that series, it's, you know, we're annexing property, and how well that the developer and the attorneys worked with the neighborhood and the city to make a really a walkable community and accessible to things next door, rather than, you know, they have walkways from the neighborhood to the actual church on the corner, so that people can get out of subdivision without actually getting in their car and driving a mile to get someplace that's like 100 yards away. So it was a really good working relationship, and I think they're going to build a great neighborhood out there. So thank you.
Wonderful. And that is the 1,200 block through the 1,300 block of North Crisbon Road out in that area.
98 through 90.
90. Okay. Great, looks like it. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is hear a presentation and discuss and provide direction regarding hotel development at River View. Feel free to introduce yourselves and...
Good morning, Vice Mayor. I'm Scott Riggs with the Econ Development Office.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Paul Welker with Sunridge Hotel Group. We're located in Mesa, Arizona.
I'm Brian Welker with Sunridge Hotel Group.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. We're here to discuss River View, which is, used to be the golf course down there, but now is the home of the upcoming Chicago Cubs spring training facility. We want to take a couple of minutes and talk about some, as Vice Mayor mentioned, some exciting developments. Wanted to take a minute at the very beginning to talk about the entire site and walk back, probably a year and a half, two years ago, as we started to lay this out. As you go from west to east, we have what we call city fields, just the fourplex of baseball fields that are used by the Cubs during spring training, but outside of spring training, it can be used for city events, for city leasing to fantasy camps or other activities. We have in the middle there, the team facilities, which is the actual team clubhouse and their fields of practice. And then you have a stadium moving right in the center of that. Then we have, just east of that is what we'll call the commercial development area, sometimes affectionately known as the Wrigleyville West Concept. And then, bringing it home on the east is the revitalized and redeveloped River View Park. And so really, what we've designed in this project is the three key portions, which is the spring training facility on one end, on the other end is the fantastic new River View Park, and in the middle is this concept we talked about way back when, is about bringing commercial development outside the front door of the stadium and taking advantage of that opportunity. Again, this is the area we're talking about. It's commonly known as the Passo. It's that connection between the front door to the stadium and the lake. If you were to go out there today, you could literally stand on the edge of the lake on that platform and look directly west down the Passo into that right field main entry into the stadium. And this Passo is envisioned to be, it's a wide kind of boulevard with so lush landscaping that people can use before and after the game for tailgating, for meandering back and forth. The goal is we want to pull those people before and after the game out of the stadium to utilize this area. As you'll also see the green, and you kind of see overlaid as soccer fields, is this is game day parking, but when it's non-game day parking, it is be used for other sports activities such as soccer. The area that's considered from the Wrigleyville development, as we've kind of aligned here, is about 15 acres, about nine and a half on the north Passo, and about six and a half on the south Passo. As we started to get into the project and look at how would commercial development potentially be laid out, we'd worked with some designers on, out in the community to figure out what would be the best way to potentially lay out. This is not the final design. This is an opportunity that we have a document that we can share with potential developers, whether it be hospitality, or retail, or eateries, potentially how that Passo area could be laid out. And one of the key components are the hospitality industry, the hotels. This one shows two in the middle. We'll talk about it a little bit as a slightly different alignment because of some recent discussions, but I wanted to give you the idea about what we're envisioning here. Back in our early discussions with the Cubs, the Cubs really wanted to take the lead in that Wrigleyville discussion, and right now, in the agreement they have technically the lead in leading all activities with Wrigleyville development. In the past few months, probably the last six, eight months, with the city manager's leadership, we've worked with the Cubs to figure out how can we both jointly work on moving this forward. And what we've kind of come to an informal agreement that we hope to come back in the next 30, 45 days, which is formal agreement with the Cubs, is that we'll focus, the city will focus on the hospitality aspect with the hotels on the north Passo, and then the Cubs will be allowed to focus their efforts on that south side of Passo, really focusing on how do we pull, how can they be successful in pulling some of those Chicago-type of eateries and unique aspects out of Chicago area into this project. The goal is to create just not another power center that you see either at Tempe Marketplace to the west or River View to the east. The goal is between the stadium activity and the park and some of these hotels and other activities, that this becomes a destination year round, whether it be for spring training or for... spring training or for other baseball or soccer leagues or tournaments or taking the opportunity to be there at the park. We think, we're excited about this, the Cubs are excited about this, especially with some of the, the things we're gonna talk about here in just a minute. So we've, we've had an opportunity to last four to six months, uh, have a number of discussions with different hospitality groups. Obviously, we're here sitting today with, with one of those who have made a decision to move forward, that's Sunridge Development. Uh, and today, and which you'll see on the agenda for Monday evening, is entering into an MOU, or memorandum of understanding with Sunridge Properties for the development of the first hotel out at the River View site. Um, they are, uh, proposing to build a Marriott Spring Hill Suites. And I'll let them at the end kind of talk about who they are and what is Spring Hill Suites in case we're not as familiar. One of the things that excites us about the Marriott brand is they have a high brand loyalty among their users, which means as new Marriott's go up, a lot of their rooms are filled by other Marriott users who are simply, as they go on vacations or do business travel, are looking for where's the closest Marriott to where I'm staying. So a lot of that, that activity is driven by, uh, the in-brown loyalty program. They've built over thirty hotels in the southwest and they, thing that excites us about is they own and operate these type of hotels, so they don't simply build them and, and lease those out to somebody else and they walk away. Their owners and investors, they want to make sure their properties continue to have the upkeep and care. Um, they're, uh, been awarded the Marriott Partnership Circle Award the last four years. I think yesterday you had Bill Marriott out to your most recent hotel down in Gilbert. So we're excited to have them on board. Some of the commitments they've made is this hotel will be a minimum of four stories, a minimum of a hundred rooms. The goal is to start construction in January of 2014 with opening for, for March of 2015, which is that second spring training season out at the new Cubs facility.
Question, Councilwoman Higgins?
Vice Mayor, um, I just wondered, is this, um, first like the size, is this what we're, is this too small for what we're looking for in the area? One question. And the second is, uh, is it really the quality of hotel that we're gonna need for more than just the month of March? Is this gonna draw, you know, is this gonna like help fulfill the needs that Boeing has for room nights and other businesses in the area? Or are we just building this here at River View to attract spring training and like a sports market?
I'll, I'll first respond and maybe Paul can respond to that, uh, cause obviously he's in the hospitality business, he can talk about the demand drivers. Um, in general, spring training for six weeks is a, is a huge hotel driver. Um, but quite simply, you can build a, you can only build a hotel anywhere in the valley during the month of March and, and early April, you're gonna be successful. The challenge is how do you be successful the other ten, ten and a half once a year? One of the primary drivers for this site is a location 101, 202, you're kind of the center of the valley universe, um, great visibility. Uh, one of the drivers is Boeing is four and a half, five miles down the street. It's in between Sky Harbor and Boeing, uh, and you have just down the street to the south is the Banner Desert Facility. So we think it's a good opportunity. Um, Paul can talk about what the market is as far as hospitality. Uh, it's still a little bit soft, we're still coming out of the recession. Uh, we do believe that this size is a good, what I call starter opportunity, uh, that first investment. Uh, as you notice here is they have an opportunity to second hotel. What we'd like to see is prove to the, to the industry that this site and this product works and that, uh, if that works, Marriott wants the opportunity to do a second hotel. And Paul, maybe you want to talk to them about?
Yeah, Dee.
Can you just add something? I stay at Spring Hill Suites all the time, but I just don't, you know, it's not that full-service hotel that like, you know, the higher-end business traveler might want to be staying at, so. But I'm quite happy with them. In fact, I was in one two days ago, so.
Yeah, uh, that's a good question. Uh, Spring Hill Suites is part of, uh, as you're aware, is part of the Marriott, uh, portfolio of hotels. And, uh, its place in that portfolio is the upper mid-scale, uh, which is, you know, attracts the corporate customer. I mean, that's their primary focus. And we have several Spring Hill Suites as we do all the Marriott brands. We, we currently have all the Marriott brands in our portfolio. And the demographic from the Spring Hill generates a higher revenue than it's what is currently experienced by most of the hotels in the competitive set, in the, in the immediate area. So it is, one of the primary targets would be the Boeing and, you know, so on and so forth. Uh, now, it doesn't have full-service restaurants and those type of amenities, it doesn't have extensive convention space, uh, and there's a reason for that. It just is not, you know, financially feasible to do that. If you wait for that type of product, it'll be a long wait in that particular area. Uh, this is a very, very nice product, uh, very well received by the public, by the traveling public, uh, and we have done very well with them. Uh, as Scott mentioned, we just opened a Residence Inn next to Banner Gateway Hospital. Uh, unfortunately, it's in Gilbert, not unfortunately, but, you know, I, I'm sure you wish it was in Mesa.
Always.
But you've probably seen that project and, uh, that's a, you know, another Marriott brand that is similar with a little bit different perspective. Uh, it's an extended stay, we built that because the hospital's there and we get a lot of hospital patients there at the cancer center that will be extended stay. Uh, Spring Hill is a great brand, kind of cutting-edge, you know, as far as their product. And we'll show you some pictures of some of those, uh, that have been built. And, uh, so we're very happy with it, we would, uh, you know, we would like to do that, so.
Great. Councilmember Summers, thank you, Paul.
You, you've mentioned, uh, the, I think the aesthetic is important here. Um, it's supposed to be Chicago Wrigleyville West, so when you get to these pictures, we, we cheated, we're moving ahead on the pictures. He's, he's telling me how your layouts are in these various ones, cause, uh, uh, Councilmember , uh, Richen's uses this brand as well. Um, you have two very distinct-looking facilities. One is urban, looks like something you might see in Chicago, or this one happens, it's, yeah, it's in Alexandria, Virginia. Uh, the other one, more something that you would typically see in the southwest because it's in Colorado, but we're trying to create a new vibe here, so I'd be interested to hear a little bit more about what you're planning for aesthetically.
Yeah, perfect. Maybe we could just move to that part since we're all anxious and excited and then you could circle around and catch her some of the details if that's okay, Scott.
On the next slide, I have a question on the next slide.
You did, okay. Well, let's do that. Mr. Rigby, would you catch that, please? Sure. Yes, Councilwoman Higgins, please.
I just wondered where that, um, first number came from? Well, did we have, we do recent, what's the word? When you figure out how much property's worth?
It's based on the value that we've agreed to sell the property to, to even the Cubs. So that's kind of based on those, those appraisals that we did for that.
Appraisals, that was the word. So that's based on the stuff bef- and do they, do they look at, when we, we did that appraisal, did we look at the property as it was or as it is after we build a ninety million dollar sports facility on it?
It is as it was at the time. And there's still infrastructure and this pad site, so we'll still have to bring some infrastructure to it.
Okay.
And you're right, there is the benefit of having the stadium there, um, that wasn't there before when we did the appraisal, that's fair.
I wonder how that changes and...
I don't know.
Okay, where, where would you like to go with this, or did we move to that portion?
Why don't we go to the, why don't we go to the photos and once, Paul, why don't you, uh, kind of walk us through what you, we're seeing here in, in the images and then maybe give us some of your preliminary thoughts about what you, you're imagining happening out at, um, the site?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question too about what will the aesthetics of the building be? How will, you know, what will they match as far as the surrounding area? And certainly, when we go into an area, we want it to, you know, have a, a physical feel that ties in to what the local, you know, aesthetics are and what the local development is. Uh, case in point is at the Banner Gateway, uh, Residence Inn, if you had a chance to go by there, that is designed, that's a Residence Inn, but it was designed for that location to fit into that medical environment. Uh, more of a high-tech, uh, contemporary look on the building, ties in with the hospital setting. And so if you have a chance, you'll see that. But with regard to this, what we anticipate is doing a design that will fit in with that stadium atmosphere. Uh, and it would be, you know, uh, we have some, we have some flexibility there, it is a prototype building, but we will, what we're planning on doing right now is a, you know, something that gives mass, gives height, ties into, you know, whether it's brick, steel on the exterior, components that, uh, would address that, you know, the environment that we're located in.
So some of the direction we've given, we've talked about, uh, recently is with the Passo, we're really trying to create, um, some energy and activation on the Passo. So as Paul's saying, we kind of want it up close and maybe balconies or whatever, looking out over the Passo, cause ultimately, we want to have a very active Passo and, and have with them there, kind of as the first, we want them to set that tone where it really, um, integrates well with, um, the activities that would happen on the Passo.
Yeah.
And that's the word I wanted to hear, is how, is how this aesthetic was gonna tie in to the action, the activity and, and drawing some people out.
Yeah, and that's in our preliminary discussions, obviously, that's, we haven't progressed really far down that path until we get the, you know, MOU and the, the, uh, things covered that we need to with the city, but we've had meetings with our architectural team and that's the direction that we're headed. Uh, it will, you know, it's not, it'll probably have parking in the rear and give mass of the building that's presentable out toward Rio Salado and the stadium.
For the front, yeah.
Right, give some mass and height and some perspective there. And, uh, the components, you know, will be, uh, some brick and steel and a mix of those type of things to tie in with the stadium-type environment.
And in a melding of the southwestern and Chicago style.
Right, exactly.
Well, it is, it's the first, it's the first row other than the stadium, first commercial building that's coming out of the ground and it's gonna set the tone for what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
In other words, we, we want to make sure that it's, this fits in well, this bleeds well.
Right. The location that I think we've pretty much settled on is this, this location, this site would actually be furthest or closest to the, um, park, the lake on that side of Passo. So it's a combination of, you know, the opportunity for them to have great vistas back into the park and on the Passo, so it'll be a very unique setting. So I think we'll work with them and we need to probably provide them even more information about how that's gonna look and how that, um, so they can integrate with that too.
Yeah, if it looks like what's up on the screen now, I'm gonna be disappointed.
Yeah, well, and we'll work on that.
And so, if you could, maybe some particulars about the number of rooms, other things and...
Well, our, uh, you know, uh, I, that's a, that's a good question and, and it kind of addresses to Council, uh, Councilwoman Higgins' question too about the value, without the stadium there, we would have no interest. Uh, that's really the attraction, but that's only, you know, one or two months a year. And, uh, we, uh, you know, it, uh, that's what, that's what the driver is. And, uh, but, uh, what, what's your more specific question?
Well, it'd be interesting, you know, perspective for me is, you know, this is the Chicago Cubs Western Headquarters.
Right.
They're doing player development there, so there's gonna be a lot of activity and, uh, so, you know, we're excited about this and, you know, a lot of people get focused on maybe just one or two months a year and we think it's gonna be a lot more vibrant than that.
Sure.
That's always been the perspective.
Yeah, and in determining, back to your question on number of rooms and determining that, we took, take a look at all the demographics and the metrics that are supported by the general area. And, and that has an, that comes to, to play with the sizing issue of the hotel. And, uh, based on the current demographics, a hundred units is probably pushing it, other than the two-year, two months of, of the year when you have the immediate demand. Uh, we're gonna have to draw from Boeing and, and, uh, you know, around the Falcon Field area and, and probably into Tempe and Scottsdale in order to get the numbers we need even on a hundred units. Uh, that's the baseline that we're at right now is a hundred units. Uh, and again, we've, we've consulted with Smith Travel Research, all of the people that do the, uh, uh, investigation as far as what is happening in the area. If it was potentially possible to do two hundred units, if the market, you know, would drive that, we would be happy to do that. But it just, it's not, it's not a feasible venture with that number of units based on what the current demand is.
And I'm sure in your study, you look at its proximity to Sky Harbor, literally minutes away on that airport.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what we've always known about that River View area is just beautifully located to a lot of places.
Yeah, and we'll have to pick up, uh, you know, we'll have to pick up demand from all those generators and that's what we're anticipating. Uh, you know, and as we've looked at all the hotels, it takes into consideration what the drivers are in the, in the immediate market area as far as RevPAR and average daily occupancies and whatnot and rates.
Well, uh, Mr. Rigby, if you could maybe run through some of the particulars there?
Well, I think if, this is the, I'll go to the last slide, which is, we've talked about this initial hotel. One of the things that we've structured into the, um, MOU and will be in the final agreement is the opportunity for them to do a second hotel. It goes back to this point is, this is the initial hotel, we need to prove the site. When I say prove the site, prove the site to the hospitality industry, to visitors, that this is a great location. And so what I would say is, as we prove the market there, as the market stabilizes and gets strong in the hospitality world, as we have structured a deal with Marriott, they have an opportunity to do a second hotel. And the second hotel basically has some, a baseline that says it has to be of at least equal size, quality and stature as the initial one. So the goal would be is maybe right now, it's the Spring Hill Suites. Hopefully, the market's stabilized and gets strong and the, and the demand grows and potentially we move to that full-service type of facility, such like a courtyard opportunity. That's where we see, we need, you know, it's, it's, everything's coming out of the ground today, uh, the market's coming back, uh, but we think this is a great first shot in the arm to get the commercial development going in the Wrigleyville. It's not just about hotels, it's how do we prove to the retail and eateries that the Cubs want to bring and, and entice it to come out here? And everybody needs to see that first, I call it the mall syndrome, everybody wants to see the Dillards sign up to go into the new mall. Once the Dillards and the Macy's sign on, then those, those restaurants and, and stores you see within the mall decide to sign on. So by having the stadium and the park and now a hotel of Marriott's, uh, status, we think it's a, it's a big signal to the commercial development community that this is a real project.
Great, we have a couple of questions. First, Mr. Kavanaugh, and then Councilwoman Higgins.
Uh, yeah, just a question on the, on the restriction. I know we've had interest from multiple entities, uh, for hotels on the site, not just this group. And, um, if you're delaying this until, uh, what, September, October 2015 before we could talk to anyone else, what, what happens if we get a great inquiry from Hilton or something, you know, that wants to come and be on the site? And I just, I guess I have some concern over the restriction on that. Uh, we hadn't talked about that in any of the briefings or discussions with the council before, and so I'm just trying to figure out how that's in the best interest of the city.
Vice Mayor, uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh, one of the challenges of any hotel opening up is that first, really six to eighteen months period of, of stabilizing to prove themselves and market their name out there and start to get the client base to realize that there's a hotel, a hotel at that location. The other thing is, is to have multiple hotels open up in the general timeline of, of each other, what you begin to see is sometimes called a cannibalization rate is, is I open up at a hundred dollars and my competitor opens up next door and he'll, or she will offer ninety dollars and then I feel I have to compete with that. And while you have maybe perhaps more rooms, which your ADR may be, you know, taken hit because there's now an oversaturation of the product in that area. So the goal that we're trying to do is provide that first, uh, first hotel an opportunity to get in, stabilize itself, get its name out there. Six months, quite honestly, is not a long time to do that, uh, even in our, our, our discussions with some of the other hotel, uh, interests. Quite honestly, Marriott's been at the table with us for probably six, eight months, uh, even talking to some of the new, other hotels that have expressed some interest. Uh, they're much earlier in the process talking with us and even if they were to, to start their process really get, uh, going, uh, even they've kind of admitted that they probably wouldn't be ready, yeah, within that six-month period. And quite honestly, you know, once spring training is over, even with the six months of, let's say, opening in, in August, September, it's probably not the prime time for a second hotel to open up, they would wait most likely till the winter season to come back on. So we think it's a good balancing that allows that first initial hotel to get in there and get going, but it doesn't preclude us from continuing to have discussions with others. And if they decide to go forward, simply that six-month waiting period, right now is not showing to be a detriment for them to move forward with those projects.
Just as a follow-up, I mean, what if Mr. Ricketts comes to you tomorrow and says, my partner Starwood wants to put a hotel right next to the stadium? We would be telling him, no, we can't talk to you until that point in time. Um, again, I have a concern because in other development agreements that we have done, I haven't seen us preclude competition, unless I'm missing it. Uh, this is something different than we have done before and it's not anything that we have talked about in our briefings on this.
So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Kavanaugh, that, that's correct. And this is at the request of this developer, um, they felt it was important for them to have some stabilization. The reality is, we have talked with, um, probably all the major brands to date, um, including Starwood, including Hilton, obviously Marriott. Hyatt already, um, has a presence, um, in the, in the vicinity, so they're, they're probably not interested at this point. So, um, in that fact, the, where those discussions are, we don't have, while we've visited the site, we've had, um, significant discussions with all of those... site, we've had significant discussions with all of those brands. The reality is, I think Mr. Rigby made this point, is before, by the time they would come back to us, which they, they're having preliminary discussions, but they haven't even identified their developer, and what's unique about here is, you not only have Marriott who has, I'm not sure what the road is, but they've agreed, they've endorsed or whatever this, this developer to move forward, the other brands are still trying to find developers who are willing to go out and, if you would, take the risk of developing on this site at this time. So, that also tells us that while this site is really, in our minds, we think it's ideal, the industry's still trying to recover and figure out what makes the best sense. We really don't think that this, the idea of we get this approved by council, we come back in May with a development agreement, they'll have such a head start that that difference between the time it would take us to go meet with other hotels and bring them forward, they're really not going to be, if you would, frozen out for any significant period of time anyway, just for the matter of fact, we don't even have them sitting actively in front of us with a developer like we have here. We've talked to the brands, but the brands are still looking to identify if there's a developer slash, and then what really becomes, I think, important, an owner, an operator of the hotels. Now, we are actively talking with those groups and we are talking with, Starwood is, we've started those conversations three months ago, and so that's kind of where we're at at this point.
And again, I guess, I'm not saying I don't support the proposal, I think it's a great proposal, I just have a little bit of concern of uncovering public property with an anti-competition agreement, you know, for, I mean, for a period of time.
Yeah, so all it does is it, it, it doesn't allow us to, for another hotel to open within six months. There is a provision that allows for, they have the first right to choose to do a second, if we get approached by another hotel, they have the option to match that, that offer with the standards that we've put in here. The other hotel has put up some money to show that they're serious about it. So there's a way that it both gives the Marriott, for them being the first ones in, if they want to expand, they can. If we get an offer by another brand, they have an opportunity to come to the table and make an equal or better offer. So, we've tried to put it in place so that those who are taking the first risk have some options, but it doesn't preclude anybody else at the end of the day. If Marriott declines and says, you know, "We're, we're happy with the one, we can't, we're not ready to do the second," then somebody else can come right in.
Councilman Kavanaugh, just to address that a little more, to reiterate what Mr. Brady has said, it's really a question of economics. If there was another, if Starwood or somebody was already in place, we probably wouldn't have any interest just because of what the area can support. And that's, that's evidenced by the actual numbers that are on the brochure, the, the study numbers that reference the market, the metrics that are occurring in the, in the greater market as far as the hotel industry. It's just not feasible at this point to put two hotels there. And the time that it takes to stabilize a hotel and to get it active, you know, actively producing and whatnot, it's, you know, it's, there's some limits there and that's the reason for that. We have gone into some markets where we've developed three hotels next door to each other, in, actually, three Marriott brands, and some markets we've developed two, but that's been a phased, you know, a phased process. And, so that's, that's, you know, some, some feedback regarding that.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. The study you referenced, is that something we did or is that something we can see? Because that would be good information, because I just wondered how you end up with 100, you know, where did the 100 room, and obviously it came from some market study that we have not been privy to, but that would be great information, so we could actually, because, okay, I'm not a hotel developer, right? I don't even know, are those pictures you showed us, 100-room hotels, is, you know, what's the Hyatt place, what's the Marriott next door, how about the Hilton? Just so we get a sense of what is a 100-room hotel.
Well, if you want to get an idea, the one that we built next to, we just opened a month ago next to Banner Gateway, that's 100 units.
Okay.
It looks much larger than that, but it is 100 units. These hotels are approximately 100 to 120 units
Okay.
that are, that are being referenced.
So your market research says
Well, if
the area can support, I mean, if it came back and said, "You needed 180 rooms," I'm sure that's what you would be presenting this morning?
Well, basically, we look at the demographics and the market metrics generated by Smith Travel Research that shows what the, the occupancy is. And if you basically have an occupancy that's in the high 50%, and the capital investment to build whatever product you're going to build and you're running in the 50 to low 60% occupancy, 100 rooms is a stretch. I mean, it doesn't, we don't need a, you know, extensive market study to tell us that.
Okay.
If you're going to have 50 rooms empty every night, your break-even point is approximately 65 to 70%.
But Paul, the, the Smith Travel is a, is a resource that if, we could go draw that same, it's just, it's doing an analysis of the existing market and we could go get that ourselves and show that
Absolutely. They won't tell you, "You need to build 100 units," they'll tell you what the market is doing and the developer will look at it and say, "Okay, you know, our break-even point traditionally are 65 to 70%, the market is at 58%. We're going to lose money out the door for the first, you know, X number of months until stabilization." And so, the developer makes that call, but it's pretty, pretty easy when you know where your break-even point is and what the market is doing in general.
And do, do they look at, like, future, or do they look at, like, developments like will be built out in other areas of the country to compare what happens to the market when something like that comes in, or is it just kind of, "This is the area today and this is what we can support?"
They, they look at the area today and, you know, in the case of the Cubs Stadium, it is going to bring some business, but the principal time when they're going to bring business, everybody's full anyway. They will, they will be doing spring ball and winter ball and all of the other things, but that's not your big room night producer, it is during spring training. You could be mom and pop's, you know, hotel and you're still going to fill during that time, the question is, what are you going to do in the other 10 months of the year? And that's what's critical in that, you know, that average occupancy for a year's time.
So now, this is a different question, but I'm, I'm just like the Spring Hill Suites brand, like, depending on where you go, they have different amenities, like, your picture shows a little coffee bar in a bar, I've been to other things that are just, you know, there's the little bi-a-soda in a little cooler. What, what decisions, I mean, do you have to make, change stuff? Like, can, and I've been at little other Marriott's that have, like, a little limited menu where you can actually get a sandwich and a salad or something.
Yeah, the, the courtyard has the bistro, which has, is an in-house, you know, what you're referring to, the, the, the points on the Spring Hill Suites is they include breakfast, a fairly extensive breakfast, they have a market for sundries and various different things. All of the, the standard room is 25% bigger than a regular hotel room, it's bigger than the courtyard room. It's one of their emerging star brands, it was rated by J.D. Powers, the top brand in their, their segment along with Hilton Garden Inn. Some of the other factors that are included in that, well, there's, there's an offering of meeting space too, it's not a convention hotel per se, but you have meeting space, you have the market, you have the breakfasts included. They are all suites that have a small kitchen at their one-room suites, 25% bigger than a standard hotel room, whether it's a Hilton Garden Inn or a courtyard. Caters to the leisure market, it's very good for sports teams because they like the free breakfast, the more, more space, they can usually sleep more. Price point on them is very commensurate with a courtyard, so that gives you a little bit of detail about it, but is one of their emerging power brands.
But like, this picture showed like an actual bar with beverages available, do, do you pick, like, you as the developer decide what parts of the Spring Hill you're going to build in your
Uh, they, it is a prototype and you include the elements that are part of their prototype.
Okay.
You can put a bar in, we won't put a bar in this particular location, so.
Not, we, not that we would discourage, we like options in Mesa, but, yeah, like I said, I just, I stayed at one Monday night in Saginaw, Michigan, it's, would be a, it's a choice, but it's nice to have the ability to not have to leave the hotel for something, so.
Right, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You know, it's nice, we're able to visit with you, this is the first time we've had to meet you and kind of discuss some of these ideas, so, thank you for, you know, as you give us all this information.
You bet, thank you for having us.
Sure, Mr. Rigby?
I think just in closing, the next steps is, pending approval on Monday night, we would be coming back with a full agreement hopefully in May to finalize all the details. Then, obviously, the, the project moves into the design and construction phase. The other, other contingent that's important to this is, the City of Mesa and the Chicago Cubs are in agreements to what we call, what we're affectionately calling the Option Agreement Amendment, which was the regional agreement that we have with the Cubs on how to do commercial development, that they would take the principal lead. This agreement that we'll come back to in hopefully the next 30, 45 days would be removing some of that property from the Cubs responsibly and moving it to the city's responsibility, but focusing on the hospitality development and allowing both parties to work aggressively to further commercial development out at, at River View.
Right, and maybe you could just give us a quick overview, just recently, there was a tour on the site and involved Chicago businesses?
Yeah, probably, I guess it's now three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, Chicago Cubs, it was an opportunity for them to get some of their media outlets back in the Chicago Midwest area to come out and view the site and really see it coming out of the ground, I think it was also an excuse to get out of the snow. So they had two buses out there, probably 25, 30 people of the media out there?
Fifty, yeah.
Okay, 50, including Gary.
Got to count Gary.
What's that?
Got to count Gary.
Yeah, he doubled it. He was out, out there taking a tour of the whole facility. The second part of the tour, which, which didn't get a lot of attention as it was, is they had their major corporate sponsorships as well as pending potential partnerships as well as other potential partners with them to show the site, to show the opportunities for investment, whether through sponsorships at the stadium or spring training or potentially at Wrigleyville. To see the area, see this Passo that's been talked about, to see the stadium come out of the ground, I think if you were to go there today, when we were out there, there's probably only a couple pieces of steel coming out of the ground for the actual stadium. If you were to go out there today, basically all of home plate and wrapping around, the lattice work that's going up, it's, it's pretty amazing. So I think the attention of the site is picking up because it's really coming out of the ground, people can kind of picture where things are going. And then, I think what's exciting to us is, if the mayor is able to be on the construction by January of next year, as spring training starts that first year, you're going to see all that, activity walking by that construction site, including sponsors, including potential businesses saying, "Marriott's going in, why am I not here, I need to be thinking about this opportunity."
Right, and that's the excitement I took away and why I mentioned that. So we, we have this evolving Wrigley West, we have the opportunity for hotels and the city's involvement there, there's active, activity going on with businesses from Chicago looking on the, on that, that south side of the Passo, things are happening, this is good. I, I do remember some naysayers that thinking things would never happen out there, so I take away the, you know, the, the positive out of that portion. Are there any other questions from council? Well, thank you for attending today and giving us this great news and look forward, this is again for a MOU that we'll look at Monday night and then the future development of those other aspects, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do what first, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to hear a presentation to discuss a branding update on Visit Mesa. And please feel free to introduce yourselves and, although we recognize friendly faces.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Mark Garcia with Visit Mesa, with me is Jeff Moraglia with Mindset Inc., our new brand manager. That's exciting news about the Spring Hill Suites, we look forward to helping book it and keep it full as much as possible. The last time I was here was October, I think I was about four to five months on the job, and I gave you sort of a, what's the new guy up to presentation, shared with you some of the changes that we were making internally, structurally, organizationally, some personnel moves, some exciting projects like LPGA, which has come and gone, we're thrilled with the visitmesa.com Gateway Classic and its prospects for growth in the future. We talked about wrapping light rail cars and buses in Denver and Ogden, our new customer relations management system, a new database that not only are we excited about, but our partners are really excited about. But at the close of that presentation, I began to share with you the, the need for a full destination rebrand. And the first part of that process was an audit of our current brand. And I introduced to you Jeff Moraglia at, at that time, and we're thrilled that he could be here again this morning. Another important first step was, we felt, changing our name from Mesa Convention and Visitors Bureau to Visit Mesa, but so much has happened since October and that's what we're here to share with you this morning. Our board of directors ratified the name change in November and from there, as it relates to this rebranding process, we were off and running. But we wanted to make sure that it was transparent, that there was buy-in from the community and to do so, we created a brand development advisory committee made up of key stakeholders in our industry, along with members from the City of Mesa. And that committee met for the first time in December. That first meeting was really an overview, it was about process, it was about timelines and goals and objectives, but it was also about reviewing the RFP that we had drafted internally, they made some changes, it was kicked out in December, and then the group met in January. The RFP was sent to about 12 to 15 creative ad agencies that we knew could do the job effectively. And in January, we received about nine responses, five of which had responded adequately, that met all of our requirements that we had outlined in the RFP. And the group in January narrowed it down to two finalists. And those two finalists were Jeff with Mindset and a group out of San Diego called StarMag Group. And both groups really did an outstanding job, both in their written proposals and in their in-person presentations that were held in February. But ultimately, the advisory committee unanimously supported Jeff receiving the creative services contract, and really for three, three reasons. First, they preferred his creative concepts, secondly, he was less expensive, and, and third, he's local. And what I mean local, I mean really local, I mean, he's going to be in our office, he's going to be in-house, which was really attractive to the committee and to us at Visit Mesa because, you know, you need to be, this is a very detailed process, you need to see what's happening on a day-in, day-out basis. And that's tough to do when you have a stadium between you and you then have to do things by email digitally, you have to Skype and those sorts of things, and it's, you know, far more preferred for me to be able to just walk down the hall and, and give some direction to Jeff. So we're thrilled he's with us. The next couple of slides, if you want to go through them, just share with you who's on the committee. The last time we were here, the mayor had suggested strongly that we make this a regional brand and we're doing just that, and we wanted to make sure there was representation on the committee from Apache Junction, from Gilbert and Queen Creek, and it's exactly what the audit had revealed, which Jeff is going to get into in a minute. I don't need to go through all these names, these names are very familiar to all of you, but John Burris is doing a great job as our chair, Jay O'Donnell now serves on our full board of directors, Jay's doing a fantastic job for us. The committee as a whole is doing a great job for us and we're thrilled to have Jeff. And in my opinion, I'm thrilled that the committee made this election, I've had the pleasure with working with Jeff for a number of years, he helped develop the brand for Phoenix when he was with E.B. Lane, now being on his own for, for several years now with Mindset. He's developed what many call the gold standard for destination brands in our business for the work he did for San Antonio and they're deep in the Art Campaign and most recently with the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau. But we feel his best work is ahead, it's going to happen right here in Mesa. So without further ado, I'm going to kick it over to Jeff, who's going to reveal what came from the audit and the creative steps that we've taken thus far.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity, Vice Mayor, council members. Not only have I been awarded the contract, the creative contract as well and been able to be part of driving the brand audit, but I was also very proud to be a new resident of this great city of ours. And I will be committed to do my very best to interface with each and every one of you along the way with this process. And it's going to be an incredible process, an energizing process, a process in which, when we see the brand live, or hopefully, we're all going to embrace it and live it each and every day, as I will and will be continuing to do so. We, what the brand audit revealed is that, you know, with over 60-plus interviews that we had with stakeholders, including members of this council, business owners, experienced providers, residents, we looked at, you know, many different avenues to see where our direction, where our best place would be on the world stage. And we feel that we have an empowering position to take because it reaches beyond our borders, it reaches beyond, you know, Mesa, it extends to more regional opportunity because we want to broaden our experience set for each and every traveler that wishes to have something unique, special to them, and that's all about what people want. So we're going to embark on a more regional Arizona brand experience, we're going to touch into the areas of Apache Junction, the town of Gilbert, as well as Queen Creek, because we know that we have a lot of things to offer there. What makes us really special, why we need to go regional is because, you know, it's all about our rich heritage, you know, agritourism is huge, but we have a growing sophistication to be part of the world stage. You know, our family, Midwestern values, we talk about Chicago West, bringing those Midwestern values here, it's important that we are authentic and grounded in that area. It's not a place to visit, but also it's a wonderful place to live. It's a community, many different communities that are people with passion, they're passionate about their sports, they're passionate about their wonderful outdoor recreational opportunities, their new emerging dining, the new chefs recreational opportunities, their new emerging dining, the new chefs that are moving here, and the new opportunities that people have when they can see how farm-to-fork experiences could happen better than any other city in this country. We also are a creative and cultural hub anchored by our wonderful Mesa Arts Center. And we're a gateway, not just with our great airport that's emerging each and every day, bringing millions of passengers each and every year, but a gateway to one of the finest recreational areas at our doorstep, more so than any other community and city in this great state of ours. So, we have a reinvigorated promise, something that today's travelers, from families to meeting planners, to residents, to our communities, to our leaders, we have to take that promise and realign it with our reinvigorated self. The mayor said himself that we are a city of new energy. We are the next great evolution. We are a new American city. Yes, we are showing the way. These are all the things that we have listened to, heard, and sculpted within the creation of where we're going to embark on with our brand. It's very important that we listen to each and every stakeholder that wishes to become the ambassador of our brand. But these are just passions that we want to turn into solutions. These are important things that we have to, you know, keep our eye on the ball and understand why we have this energy, and how could that be part of the today's traveler's mindset, and the meeting planner's mindset, and the people who are looking for new sports and outdoor recreation and dining experiences. I like to think that this new energy provides a sense of vibrance. This great evolution is about our growing, our growing spirit. But to be a new American city, there's a cool factor here. It's hip, it's cool, it's younger, because we're making the influx of students with the new educational opportunities that we have here. We're also showing the way in many different ways, not just with tourism, but we have an opportunity to become the catalyst for economic development, become a brand in which businesses all across the globe could see what is happening in Mesa. So those are the things we want to do and achieve with our tourism opportunity and tourism brand. But these are brand attributes, all these things of vibrance and hip and cool, but it's not the brand itself. We want to be more truthful, and we want to resonate with today's travelers. And there's many different distinct groups we have to appeal to in our efforts for our tourism brand. We have to appeal to vacationers, what do they want? What are they looking for? Our tour operators means money brought to the city from people all over the globe. Our trade show, and our clients, and our agents who want to find something different and tell a new story and understand a new story about what this destination offers. Distinct group meetings, what do we do best? Large, small. Sports, opening up new doors and new opportunities for people who want to host tournaments. We're doing a great job right now, even with golf, but we have soccer, and we have tennis, and we have other things that we can do, swimming, that will be a big part of what we drive each and every year. And it's about economic development. Could we appeal to companies all over the world looking for an amazing quality of life? And that quality of life can bring possibility to grow families, grow community, grow business. I'm going to play you something that, kind of in the spirit of where we're at, of where we're at. Do we have a video up?
So repetitive advertising.
We're relentless, if nothing.
Well, the beauty of this is that we are limitless in our perception, and we are limitless of possibility, we have limitless opportunities, and we are going places far beyond where we went. Mesa City Limitless allows us to push the envelope a little bit further, and incorporates us as a regional brand by bringing in all the experiences that people don't normally find in other destinations. City Limitless allows us to talk about, you know, the things that we can do better, and things that we will paint the canvas, this great canvas of ours in terms of experiences and what today's travelers want. Authenticity of what we have, excitement of what we will offer, and Mesa will be more than March through this brand.
Chris, can we get this signed? Mesa City Limitless?
Yeah, I like that a lot.
I want to put one on the, oh, that's Dan if you can make one up for you.
Dan?
We're just getting going.
This is just a Tippody iceberg, but thank you so much.
I want one. I want to put it on a rope.
And we have, we have a prototype, we have prototypes that we could create, but this is all conceptual form. There are logos and designs that are presently on the table, and this goes without any sort of testing involved. We're going to go out there and test it with our consumers, our travelers, we're testing it with our meeting planners, but we feel we have a viable opportunity and a real, true canvas to start showcasing why we are limitless in so many else. This is a brand. This is not a campaign. This is a brand that everyone will be part of and embrace. So here are some of the concepts that we're rolling through, a look, a feel, that allows us to start, you know, creating an identity that will get people excited to understand who we are and what we offer. And these are just merely just concepts in the works. So to look at it, we know that City Limitless is believable, because if you look at what we're doing, not just from the standpoint of what we have, but how does it appeal to your emotions? Travelers today are more emotional, they decide upon their emotions. What they desire, what they need, what they want, is all about these are the opportunities that if we could provide a limitless portfolio of things to do today and build on for the future, then City Limitless really becomes a believable proposition for our brand. It extends beyond our Mesa City, goes into the other areas, which allows us to become greater in our perception and greater in terms of the value experience for each and every guest. But the beauty of it is, we have guiding principles. The guiding principles will guide a lot of the things that we're going to talk about. We know that from a Visit Mesa standpoint, we can tell a story that is boundless. We're geographically surprised to many people how close we are to the Tonto National Forest, how close we are to the bounty of agrotourism. We're effortless with our airport now taking shape, bringing more passengers each and every day to our great city. We're priceless in terms of the emotion of the value experience. It is a priceless experience. We're fearless because we are energized, we're on the move, and we're headed towards, you know, even brighter horizons. And we're also timeless, because we can't forget about our great history, but we also have an eye on our future. These are the guiding principles that limitless equals in our terms of expressing ourselves. Our creative expression, well, it's building, we're working on it, we're moving forward in what we're doing. We like to think that, most importantly, to find that creative expression is also finding the emotional connection. What's going to appeal to a family? What's going to appeal to coaches? What's going to appeal to the international tourist that wants an incredible Arizona experience right here in Mesa? And that's what we're trying to do, connect emotionally. How do we do that? Well, we have to be relevant. We have to be sure that we understand today's target audiences. This is not a broad appeal, but we're going to dig deeper and connect with people who are looking for a unique sporting opportunity, a unique dining opportunity, a unique cultural and art opportunity. We're going to make it so relevant, it's going to bring it down to one word in our creative expression, which is all about me. And nothing is more, is greatly, greater personified in the word Mesa than the word me, and we're going to appeal to me. The brand, the brand, understand, it's about City Limitless. This is our canvas, this is where we're going. The campaign is personal, it's taking an interest in each and every traveler to appeal to who they are. That's what Mesa is, that's what Mesa has always been done. It's all about me, City Limitless. And how we do that? Well, we express it uniquely by appealing to families and what they get out of it from a unique sports opportunity, such as if they're here in March, but we know they're going to be here in August. We also know that they're going to enjoy what's new and exciting, and the things that are happening in a modern, urban community. We know it's about healthy living and appeal to those that offer that sense of healthy living from the standpoint of what Mesa does best. Spirit and the thrill of enlightenment, all these things, what's cool and what's urban, it's all about who we are and what we offer. It's all about me, adventure, and memory, creating those wonderful memories. It's all about me, all about Mesa, it's City Limitless, the international tourist. It's all about meeting planners, because we all know it's about me, 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 and we need to appeal to that. These are devices that will allow people to think me, to think Mesa. When they think Mesa, they're going to think of limitless possibilities. When a business has an interest in a region to set up, we know that, we can talk about City Limitless in such a way that they're going to feel like their, their company could grow as well, and that's what we want, and from a tourism brand, from an economic development brand. So, City Limitless, it's all about me. It clearly speaks to all of Mesa's points of differentiation. It's a positive emotion, that's what we want. What matters to me, the visitor, is what's important in communicating our brand. It's believable because we know that Mesa today, Mesa tomorrow, will be limitless. It crosses all geographic areas and cultural boundaries, and it sells Mesa and the region beautifully. That's what we are, that's what we're embarking on, that's where we're headed towards, this is our concept. And the testing is happening this month. We're going to go in a number of different key markets. We're using a lot of different bold techniques through bulletin board techniques and interfacing with focus groups. So you're going to see results within the next thirty days to see how this looks in front of the eyes of the people that we want to connect with each and every day. I thank you for the time, this is another part that I'll hand it off to Mark. Thank you for embracing this concept, and certainly thank you for embracing me as a new resident of your community.
Well, finally, I just wanted to share with you the damage that tends to come with enterprises of this magnitude, and that's what you see before you now is a budget. It's a pretty realistic budget. These are things that will hit throughout the course of the next year, but some things obviously are happening immediately. Jeff's obviously started, we're doing the testing, and we intend to roll out at least the beginnings of this brand, as I shared with you last time, at a huge international trade show, big industry trade show in June in Las Vegas. That will include a new trade show booth, some of our new collateral, certainly a new logo, and some other elements. Our destination video, which you saw, was not our destination video, it was just a teaser. Our true destination video will be about three and a half minutes long, and it'll be customizable, editable. But we hope you're excited, as we are with all of this. We're thrilled with it, we know we're going to be successful with it, and we are working with the city manager and his office to come to a creative solution to help support these costs. Definitely we'll take any questions, Vice Mayor.
Any questions, Mr. Summers?
I'll start with some comments, more than a question, let you respond to that. I like how the brand is going and it's centered on the me. What's interesting about this is, I think social media has to play a major part of taking it from a brand, which is well-defined here, into a media campaign. And I was listening to a really interesting story about advertising and how it's really seen a sea change, because you don't get to define oftentimes your brand as much as you would like to. That's social media really is putting, is changing the way advertising is impacting brands. And one example, and this was a negative example, is you spend all this time, this airline spends all this time defining itself and the experience that you're going to have. You're going to, you know, by its music and by, you know, the ease and by what's on the television, but they're really defined by the social media attack about what people really think, the pictures of them in line, the pictures of them, you know, when your bags get torn up, those kind of stories that come over. So when we look at this me brand, I think what we need to start thinking about is how the experiences, how, how we make sure that people maximize their positive experiences in Mesa, so that me becomes pictures of me at the ballgame, me at a great hotel, me at some fantastic city parks, because we're using those as our soccer fields, our ballgames, our swim events, that the me part of this is really extremely positive. You can't always control that, but I think the way this brand is setting up could lead to, leads in the right direction about thinking how that, how we try to manage that path as best we can, so that people have positive experiences, and those things outside of our control actually work for our benefit.
A great point. We understand how social media is going to help shape our brand. We understand that it is our job to provide positive imagery, positive stories, and we know that this particular brand and this message behind this brand will help support that. But I do believe that today, it's very important that as we are making it more about today's consumer directly, they're going to become the ambassadors, and they're going to become the positive force behind this brand. We're going to utilize a number of different social media channels and campaigns and programs in order to push these messages out there. And we'll be able to do a greater job in looking at how we can become a unique presence in today's travel, in today's traveler's mind. And those are the things we look to capitalize on, and those are certainly, we're very mindful of setting a new mindset for where we're going with social media. Great question.
Mr. Richardson's.
How does some of the stuff that we've done traditionally for a long time, spring training, you know, meeting events, all that, how does that kind of fold into that? If we focus our, shift our marketing to, and I'm not sure if this is the plan, but if we shift our marketing to the brand awareness thing, you know, what happens to those particular events that we do, particularly spring training, which we just, you know, heard a pretty important presentation on?
We feel it's just going to get better. There's, it's part of who we are. I mean, we know that March does extremely well, and we know that spring training is kind of the flagship of what drives Mesa's tourism, you know, year after year. But we also know that we have to be more competitive in today's world when it comes to creating greater experiences, so people could look at Mesa differently. It's not going to change things, it's just going to make it better. And we think it allows us to extend our message for spring training, extend our message for the times that we were driving, and bring more people here during times where they're not normally here. And those are the things that we need to drive.
But you still plan on marketing specifically?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Richardson, great question. We will never fully deviate from the fact that we are a friends and family destination, and spring training will always be a key component of our marketing. The fact is, however, you know, there are a lot of changes that are happening, thanks to your leadership, thanks to the mayor's leadership, and we need to start elevating this brand commensurate with those changes, we need to start to appeal to a younger demographic, and that's where we're going with this. And social media, Councilman Summers, is a big part of that. So, I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's going to be a tough shift, you know, it's going to be a little mind, I think this is very clever. And when I saw it, when I was going through materials in preparation for this meeting, you know, I ran around the house showing, hey, honey, you know, showing my wife, what do you think of this? Showing my neighbor, what do you think of this? You know, and it is, it's very clever, I love the play on words with it, and the, all the different things that it implies also. So I applaud you for, I just wish I was as clever as you guys were about stuff like this. This would be great.
Let me just tell you, it doesn't come out of thin air, and we thank you for allowing us to get to this point, because without doing the audit the way we did it, and interviewing each and every one of you, we sat in rooms, we talked about many different things, it came down to this. It came down to this. So you have a big part in what we have created for you today.
Great. Well, we're definitely feeling your passion, excitement. Any other questions? If not, okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next item up is a report on upcoming job order contracts. Ms. Ewing?
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. That's a tough act to follow.
We want all that passion in this.
We have several exciting projects on the list this morning, for your consideration. Actually, these are exciting projects. The first project on the list is from our brand-new Parks Bond Package Program. It's for Monterey Park over off of Power Road. It's to install thirty-seven trees along Monterey with drip and to also remove a septic tank that's on site to start getting the site ready for a future park. And we're pretty excited about the price on this one. We had gone out and gotten quotes from a nursery to provide the trees, and using the contractor's buying power of our JOC contracts, we were able to get the trees installed with drip irrigation for a thousand dollars less than buying the trees outright. So that's kind of where the buying power of these contractors comes in, that helps us get our projects a little cheaper. The second one is a flood control grant project. We got over half of the project funded through the Flood Control District, to repair an area over off of Gilbert and Decatur, an area where we It's to repair an area over off of Gilbert and Decatur, an area where we've had some property damage occurring from drainage, so it's to correct some issues there. And the third one is Rotary Park, which is just to the south of us here, I think it's in Councilmember Glover's district. And this is another really good example of being able to use the unique nature of the contracting method. Initially, the estimates on this park were over $200,000, and I have to give the park staff kudos, they went out and negotiated some deals and low prices on the playground equipment, got some stuff donated. We're also bringing the community in on, I think it's going to be scheduled for May 4th, to do some of the labor in putting the engineered wood fiber fill in under the park. So we're able to get this park for under $100,000, less than half of where we started. So it's kind of the unique nature of being able to do these projects this way.
Oh, great news, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, we appreciate that. Next item is acknowledged receipts of minutes of various boards and committees. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, here reports on meetings or conferences attended. Mr. Summers?
Vice Mayor, I'll do two very quickly. The mayor may elaborate a little bit more upon his return, but we had a forum at AZ Labs, which is really about selling AZ Labs and showing what a jewel it is, not just for the city of Mesa or the region, but the state as a whole. From that meeting, I understand we have a couple or more parties who are interested in perhaps pursuing leases of some space, so hopefully we'll see more agreements in the near future. Also, last night, I helped moderate one of the meetings for Gilbert Public Schools. They're searching for a new superintendent, so if you happen to be in the city of Mesa but within the Gilbert Public School District, they're going to be holding several more meetings over the, I think, tonight. If you have the opportunity to go, the board would really like to solicit input on what parents and other stakeholders would like to see in the next superintendent.
Great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Five of us were able to attend a great event yesterday at Serine Adult Daycare, and they announced really their kind of rebranding to Oakwood Creative Care, which I think was a, is a well-thought-out concept. The city's had a very long partnership with Serine over the years, and the Mesa Leadership Class this year took this agency on as for its class project, and I think between the work the city did, we executed it several months ago, an independent lease with the, with the, this nonprofit. The facility looks dramatically better, and because they're housed in a city facility that was showing its age, and the work that has been done there in partnership with the city, with the agency, with Mesa L T D, was really amazing to see how the project has transformed. They really have provided a very valuable service to the community throughout the years, and it's an example of a great partnership between the city working with its human services nonprofits for the betterment of the community. So I just wanted to congratulate all of our staff who worked so hard on the lease agreement over the past year, worked on the improvements, and for the Mesa Leadership Class for showing real leadership in taking the project on. Thank you.
Thank you, it was wonderful. Any others? Mr. Brady, scheduling of meetings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a reminder, this Saturday is Wingstock, where music and chicken meet. It's this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Mesa Amphitheater. Tickets are $5.00 in advance, $7.00 the day of the event. If you come early at 10:30 a.m., there will be an Easter egg hunt for the kids. Our next study session, Councilman, will be on Monday, April 1st. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
And one more event this weekend is the Heather Farr Classic at Longbow, which is American Junior Golf Association. So if you, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Longbow, Northeast Mesa, beautiful course, walk around, follow tiny little children that are like 12 and 15 and 17 that can hit the ball farther than you would ever hope to a year ago, and accurately. So it's a lot of fun. It's a great, it's a great event, and come on out, walk around, it's a lovely day in a park. So thank you.
Very nice. And we also have a flyer here for General Plan Update Workshops that are being held throughout the city, and hope that we get citizen input in the process. Ms. Mickelson, any speakers?
No requests, Vice Mayor.
Great. Looks like we have an executive session. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. We'll move into executive session. Thank you.